Hi.
We have two minutes?
I actually would, I very first about, was to come out and watch if they will come. And it's like, I don't know how I feel at this point.
Especially when you want to get the hell out of here.
It's early enough that I wasn't, I mean being the very first, you know, primary, that I wasn't actually viewed as a latecomer. Or an opportunist. Because nobody knew what was going to happen. But, but I personally felt that I was, um, I was an opportunist. Wasn't I coming at my first event over on the lens and I get to look like, uh, like I'm...
Yeah, I saw that, that one. I just prefer, I prefer that.
Sometimes you just don't know what's up. It was okay.
I couldn't, since I was blind, I was blind, I couldn't look at it.
I thought it was okay. I would have made, I would have made it right. Well, it was...
Let's see. Thanks.
There's a bunch of people basically saying, some of them are just seeing players from the beginning. It's a pair of brown, sort of brooch on there. A pair of brown is, uh, can't tell if she's wearing purple or chocolate colors.
She has a glass, a glass.
Uh, not, not the glass. Pair of brown is a black one next to the glass. She wants to, um, um, entire, yeah. You get anything else from her, do you? I'm monitoring now this for a shoot. I hear from her many times more often than I actually see her. Oh, you didn't realize. Ms. Washington, would you like some water while I'm pouring?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm going to call the Board of Education meeting, uh, to order. Our first order of, order of business is to rise for, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask our student representative, Ms. Washington, to lead us in the pledge. But let's start with a moment of silence for, um, a student that we lost recently, Marcus Radford.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on with our agenda, I would ask our, my, my board colleagues to join me down on the floor as well as the superintendent. Uh, we are going to recognize our, uh, National Board Certified, uh, teachers. So I would just ask everyone to, uh, make their way down to the floor. Thank you. Our student rep Rosetta Washington is going to help us hand out, um, the tokens of appreciation. I'll ask, uh, our National Board Certified Teachers, when you come first, come this way so you can, you can, uh, get congratulations from our superintendent and all of our school board commissioners, and then, uh, come forward and Ms. Washington will hand you your, uh, your gift. A little bit about, uh, National Board Certification. This is very important and all of you that are receiving this, I'm sure we as a district are proud of you as well as I know your schools and families must also be proud of you. National Board Certification is achieved through a rigorous, performance-based assessment that typically takes one to three years to complete. Candidates are assessed on how well they demonstrate what accomplished teachers should know and are able to do. To earn this certification, teachers build a portfolio that includes student work samples, assignments, videotapes, and thorough analysis of classroom teaching. They are also assessed on their knowledge of, of the subjects that they teach. This year's class includes seven teachers, bringing Rochester's total to four, to forty, which is very close to the number of National Board Certified Teachers combined in all of other, in all of our other Monroe County schools. Um, we're very proud of each and, each and every one of you. I ask that as I call your name, that you come forward and, um, and be recognized. So I will start with Janet Bird, who is a kindergarten teacher at School Fifty. Janet. Is your alma mater Commissioner White?
Right, fifty.
Next up is Doug Brown, who teaches mathematics at East High School. Mr. Brown? Congratulations, sir. A name I'm very familiar with, Stephen Cohen, Social Studies Teacher, School of the Arts. Congratulations, Stephen. Joan Crosby, a first grade teacher at school number six. Congratulations. Jennifer Manley, who teaches mathematics at Wilson Foundation Academy. Congratulations. Niosa Matos, who teaches first grade in a dual-language program at school number thirty-three. Congratulations. Another name I'm familiar with, Ally Ritchie, third grade at World of Inquiry School. They have empanada day at, at, uh, World of Inquiry School, I think, every year, so get hungry, stop by there. Next month, I think it is. Congratulations. And last but not least, because I know how important family is, could all of the family members, friends, colleagues of all of our Nationally Board Certified Teachers please stand and, um, be recognized so we can also give you a round of applause? Thank you all for coming out tonight, um, Nationally Board Certified Teachers, and you're more than welcome to stay around for the rest of our meeting. Thank you. We will now move, uh, to item number two on our agenda, which is acceptance of minutes. We have three sets of minutes, minutes from our December twentieth, two thousand and seven meeting, as well as our January second, two thousand and eight organizational meeting, and a special meeting which was held on January seventh, two thousand and eight. Um, my colleagues should have received these minutes. Um, any, any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes?
President Evans?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, uh, ask Superintendent Bizard about, uh, the superintendent's report of December twentieth. Uh, I had asked Dr. Calla to look into scholarship opportunities that, um, are available to students at, at institutions such as Harvard and, uh, and the University of Pennsylvania. Uh, can you tell me, uh, Mr. Superintendent Bizard, is this going to, can you check into that, being that we don't have Dr. Calla anymore longer? Uh, also, um, just to follow up on a question that Commissioner White had asked about the, um, uh, misdiagnosed, uh, misdiagnosed, um, misdiagnosis of African-American males in special education. Uh, could you also look into that as well?
The, the answer is yes. We're looking at scholarship opportunities. In terms of the special education, we actually have an audit. Uh, that's going to be done by the Council of Great City Schools, and that should be completed by the end of March.
Thank you.
Thanks. Motion to approve minutes?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor of approving our minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, our minutes are approved. We will now move on to speakers addressing an agenda item. We have one speaker, Mr. Stephen Cohen. You have, uh, three minutes. Please make your way to the podium.
I'd like to thank everyone for the time. Um, it's, uh, we're all very proud of, of, uh, of achieving the National Board status, uh, uh, this fall, but I, um, asked to speak just to thank the board and, uh, and the Office of the Superintendent, and especially the Rochester Teachers Association, for, uh, being so supportive to all of us in pursuing this credential. And I thought it would just be a good opportunity to just say a couple things about the process for those of us that went through it, and for those that might be considering it, and for those that may have just heard about it and wonder what it is. Um, there are four core propositions to the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards, and I, going through this process has rekindled my certainty that these are the things that truly represent what really good teaching and learning are. Um, things like being committed to your students and being committed to their learning, um, your knowledge of your subject and how to teach it, your desire to systematically think about your practice as a teaching professional, and to learn from your own experiences, and to be a member of a, of a learning community. And these core principles, well, I think they're just easy to lose sight of in our current test-obsessed climate. And, uh, I just wanted to remind the board and Superintendent Bizard and our community that when we're really talking about quality teaching and learning in our classrooms, it's the magic that happens in our rooms between a teacher and our students, um, that relationship where sharing new ideas, inspiring our students to imagine themselves to be participants in their own futures and in the future of our planet, that that's what real teaching and learning is about. And as we consider professional development initiatives, and as we consider, uh, the direction we want to take our district, um, I hope we will include, make sure to include and involve, uh, the professionals in our district in those decisions, to make sure that we can, uh, focus on those core principles as we take our, uh, as we work to improve the performance of our students in the district. Um, and that's, I think that's basically what I wanted to say, was just to, uh, take an opportunity to, to use this process to reflect on what's really truly important, uh, in the teaching of our students, and in helping them, giving them the experiences to learn how to be great people once they get out of our hands. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We will now move on to item number four on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Sure, I'd like to first start, uh, with my report from here and then continue from the podium with a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, the sixty-ninety-day plan of entry is on track. Our communications audit has been done. Our human resources review started today. Our special and financial audits will be done within the ninety-day period, and we'll present reports to the board on all of these. Uh, we'll be meeting with many constituents across the city and learning and understanding some of the issues facing our district. Uh, in terms of, uh, budget, we saw an increase of approximately thirty-six million dollars in the governor's budget toward the school district. Uh, it's about two million dollars less than we expected, but still an increase from, from last year, uh, in a number of different categories. Um, we've had a number of, uh, safety issues, uh, high-profile safety issues in our schools, uh, the Franklin, uh, situation as well as East, East High School. Um, we're looking at all these situations as well, as well as looking at system-wide, uh, what is happening in terms of safety. Uh, we plan to conduct, to begin conducting a number of safety audits of schools, uh, and by those audits, we simply mean that we'll get to the schools before teachers and kids get there, and leave after they leave, and review everything top to bottom, to making sure that every process is in place in terms of instruction, teaching, protocols, guidance, uh, safety, uh, scanning, et cetera, uh, to make sure that schools are doing everything they can to make sure our students and teachers, uh, and administrators are safe. Um, at the same time, too, we're looking at the number of suspensions in our, in our district and beginning to formulate plans on how to radically reduce that beginning of next, uh, school year. Um, lastly, I just want to say publicly again that, uh, we had an allegation at Wilson High School that it is an investigation that is ongoing. Uh, we're planning on wrapping that rather soon, and of course, if, if that did happen in the school, you all should know those kind of, kind of behavior is not, will not be accepted, but at the same time, too, we need to allow that, for due process to take its course, but we are investigating and will follow up accordingly. At this point, I'd like to move to the podium to do a PowerPoint presentation on graduation.
I'd ask my colleagues to move to the front row.
While we are getting ready to do the presentation, want to make sure we talk about the fact that, um, upon entry, the one thing that we've been talking about, I know this started well before I, I arrived in Rochester, in talking about the high school graduation, uh, the graduation rate that is. The fact is, again, we've been saying that high school graduation does not start, or the process does not start at ninth grade, it starts well before that. And we often say that it starts really when the child, in my opinion, before they're born, that will begin to read to them, uh, before they actually make it into this world. Early childhood, we know, is tremendously important, making sure they arrive in our middle schools, ready for middle school, arriving in high school, ready for high school. But at minimum, there are some things we can do, begin to do right away to look at the students who are not only in our, what they call the two thousand and four cohort, which means students who are currently our seniors, but students who are also, uh, in our high schools in their fifth year, perhaps even their sixth year, to see where they are in that continuum, and for us to be proactive in addressing, uh, their issues. So we'll start, first of all, by talking a little bit about what is required to get diploma in New York State. Um, we all know that two things must, must happen, that students must pass five Regents examination, and I put the word "pass" in quotes because sixty-five really is the passing score, but you can get a fifty-five and get credit to a graduation to get what we call a local diploma. If you're not aware, you should know that New York State is phasing out the local diploma, and all children in the next few years will have to get all five Regents with a minimum of sixty-five passing to get a, a regular high school diploma. So what many of you know as a Regents diploma will become the regular diploma in New York State. The second, of course, is that our students must earn twenty-two credits, uh, twenty-two units of credit to get a high school diploma, and those fall along different categories in math, in science, ELA, and social studies, to name a few. And again, there are, there is some room for, for electives in terms of, in terms of, uh, credit, and I want to be clear and say that when you look at the list of our high schools, you'll see different high schools may ask for different numbers of credit, but the one thing we, we, we're making clear to our high school administrators is that New York State trumps whatever else we may want to require in our schools. If a child has earned the twenty-two credits in the right areas and have passed the five Regents, they are allowed to get a high school diploma. Yes, we believe in pushing students, we believe in pushing rigor, uh, but the fact is that if they earn the twenty-two credits in the right categories and have the five credits, they are allowed to earn a diploma, and we're making that clear to our parents as well. Um, again, some, some of the lists in terms of math A, one science, uh, our children need to just pass one of the science regions to get the diploma. It could be in earth science, living environment, chemistry, physics, et cetera. One ELA regions, um, and two social studies, one is US, one is the global history. Uh, and to pause you, uh, um, for a short time, the global, in, in, from what we've seen, is the hardest regions for most of our kids to pass. Again, that goes back to content area literacy. To get a Regents diploma, all five must be a sixty-five, and we have, again, a number of different iterations with the Regents with honors, advanced Regents with honors. There's also a CTE endorsement that you can get, a career tech education endorsement you can get on a diploma as well. Now, before we talk about these numbers, and again, if you, if you remember, we're talking about being proactive and looking at this, want to give the one big, uh, big caveat here, that we have this data as of this week. It doesn't include the fact that we have many of our students who are taking Regents examinations this week, as well as the fact that we do not yet have mid-semester, uh, credit accumulation yet for many of our students. We talked about making this personal. We actually have this information now by student, every single student in every single one of our schools. And you may have read in the DNC where we talked about the fact this was difficult information to get. What this did for us as a district was highlight some of the issues we have around data collection. The chance tree system is, is rather new and is always difficult in implementation, but we need to make sure that the system is here to serve the needs of guidance counselors and serve the needs of principals and teachers, and making sure, again, as a district, we can see the picture well before it becomes an issue. So yes, if you look at these numbers, and we'll talk about them in a second, they, they look a little scary, but again, I don't know about them on January twenty-fourth versus June thirtieth, and that's the bottom line. And moving forward, we'll begin to know this information years ahead of time, because the goal, as you'll see, in the kind of data, the kind of robust data system that we need to, to, to develop, where principals can have cohort information year after year, semester after semester, and if we have our way, if we do this right, be able to have formative information every few weeks about every single student in our district, because again, it's about being proactive, it's about putting interventions in place before it's too late. So we see where, where students are. So as you see, if, if, if we were to have, today was January thirtieth, and I jabbered, June thirtieth, you would see that sixteen point two percent of all of our kids have passed, of all our kids who are four years or above in high school, have passed all five Regents and at least twenty-two credits. So technically, about sixteen percent of our kids could get a diploma today if they wanted to, without doing anything else. Uh, twenty-two and a half percent of, of, of twenty-two credits toward graduation of the students, again, who have been in high school four years or more, or, again, this is their fourth year or more, forty-one point five percent have at this time passed all five Regents examination. Again, it begins to show you the work that we need to do between now and June. Again, I want to underline this again, that we don't have yet information about this week's testing, as well as credit accumulation earned thus far, uh, for our classrooms. Now, looking at, in percentage of, of, of twelfth-grade students who have passed all five Regents examination, this is by school, you begin to see, again, the continuum of our high schools, and you'll see SODA is at fifty-six point four, all the way down, if you take a look at the far right, you see the overall as a district where we are at sixteen point two. So you begin to see the progression of perhaps where we need to begin to target resources. And this is, folks, what I often mean about looking at resource allocation and fiscal alignment, to see where our money needs to go to. Uh, again, it, this is, this is, I guess, a worst-case scenario, because we have not looked at this week in terms of the testing, but you can begin to see where we are. So these are students in every school, in one of our secondary schools, who have all five Regents and have passed, have gotten at least twenty-two credits toward graduation. The next slide, you see, again, twelfth-grade students or more who have passed all five Regents since January two thousand and eight, again, not counting this week, and you'll see as a district, we're at forty-one point five percent, and again, you see the progression from SODA down. The ones at zero, by the way, have alternative assessments, uh, so don't, don't really take all the Regents examinations, or the zero doesn't mean much, uh, in terms of exactly what they need to do, because many of the schools have portfolio assessments, and they're exempt from some of the Regents examinations, so don't let that, uh, concern you. Next slide looks at twelfth-grade students who have at least twenty-two credits toward graduation. Again, you see the progression. Uh, again, SODA being at the top, all the way down to, um, um, Ed Business, Edison Business School at four, four point six percent, with an overall district average of twenty-two point five percent. So what does that mean to us in the work that we need to do between now and June thirtieth? One thing we need to begin to do with the, our chief academic officers and our directors, to go school by school, again, we have the information by student, but now to begin to go back to these schools and say, what do we need to create in terms of interventions between now and June thirtieth? And you'll see us between now and June creating, uh, opportunities for students to get credits in all the five, in all the content areas, as well as Regents preparation, uh, types of, of, of tutoring. We'll need the help of the faith community, uh, community-based organizations, schools. Uh, these programs will have to happen after school, on Saturday school, and we'll find the funding to make this work, because again, uh, money, money needs to be driven toward these of our students. What I'm trying to share, again, if you take a look at this, you begin to see that even in a short time, we can begin to radically, uh, change the way we approach graduation, uh, to making sure that we're looking at, uh, the secondary school's data when students enter ninth grade, to making sure they're on track for graduation. This again highlights the fact that we need to create systems where a guidance counselor or teacher, or the superintendent can look at a school and say, I'm, I'm seeing that twenty percent of your students have not passed, have yet passed the, the ELA regions, and this is the third year of high school, tell me what we're doing with these kids will actually help them. It helps us as a system to understand what we need to drive our resources. So this is again about being proactive, it's about looking at student-level information, classroom-level information, school-level information, to making sure that we're being proactive in the work that we can do. So with these steps, things we, we, we need to do, uh, I, I guarantee you'll begin to see a rise in the graduation rate as of June thirtieth, as of August, the end of August. Again, this is, in, in, in some ways, structural and mechanical, the hard work, of course, is to make sure, making sure kids pass the courses the first time around, and once they fail, for us to begin to look at that. So again, our intervention program, uh, you begin to see some work being done with secondary schools now, and some robust work being done P to twelve next year. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your report, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, questions for the superintendent, starting on my right? Student rep, any, any questions?
Questions based on the presentation?
Yes.
No, sorry.
Thank you.
I think if I was like a good man, I believe all that is, so.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Williams?
Yes, I do. Uh, Mr. Bizard, on slide number four. Well, you have the, the sixteen point two percent have passed all five Regents and have at least twenty-two credits. Now, those students are, they could graduate today.
Yes, again, as long as the twenty-two credits are in the right areas, and we believe they are, the answer is yes.
And then, I just want to make sure I understand the distinction between the twenty-two point five percent who possess twenty-two credits, but however, they do not, they do or do not, or have not passed all five Regents.
Some have, and some have not.
Okay, and then the forty-one point five, they have passed all five Regents, but they don't have twenty-two credits.
They may not, exactly, exactly. They may have, may not have.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
I just want to, um, express my gratitude that you have acknowledged that intervention after student fails is only half of the problem, that if the data can tease out... a powerful way to look at things, and I'm very grateful to know that you are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you believe that before summer school, before PM school, get it right every day during the day?
Thank you. You know, one of the things I whispered to Commissioner White as we were sitting down there is, being that we have this so early, this, you talk about making it personal for every child, this gives us, even us board members, an opportunity to maybe even call some of the homes, because we may know some of the parents or the kids personally that may be in danger of not graduating. So I appreciate us having this information early on. Now, I think the key is what we do to make sure we move the ones that are not there yet.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, Jean-Claude, I want to congratulate you on being here just a very short period of time and getting it. This is where our important work needs to be done. And not only do you, have you communicated to this board and to this community that this is priority one for you by word, but you've done it by deed. And I am certainly extremely appreciative of your focus on perhaps there being a need for structural revision in terms of how we organize our data systems, and that these data systems should serve us in our important end game, which is to get our kids prepared to enter the real world. I also appreciate the fact that the focus is on the children that are about to graduate this year. I came in here saying, with all due respect to the cohort from 2001, 2000, 1999, I can't do anything for them. And it is good to see you and your staff focusing on the kids that are going to graduate this year, and I emphasize "going" to graduate this year, and the kids that are coming behind them. This is a significant transformation in and of itself for this district, this superintendent's focus on these children. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for saying that, because again, we have a number of staff people who work very hard to get this information, and they highlighted some of the issues we have around data as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Elliott?
I have a question, a few questions, actually. One in reference to safety at Charlotte, and I did send out an email in reference to this. And I need to express my concern about this issue that was at Charlotte. When a child is given a ticket for jaywalking, six students were given tickets for jaywalking and have to go through the court system. One parent in particular, who's a member of the NAACP, called me to say, at this child, these kids are good students, and they have to go through the court system. My concern is, why couldn't this police officer just say to the student, you know, there is an issue of your safety, why don't you come across the street? Now, these children have to go through the court system. I just think that that is a wrong approach that the police department has taken with respect to our kids. We have enough kids who are going through that system. We don't need to have kids going through the system of something as minimal as jaywalking. And so I've asked the superintendent to look into it. I was not pleased with the response that I received about that. So I plan to meet with the mayor myself and also to meet with the chief of police, because we cannot have police officers writing jaywalking tickets and say it's for their safety when all they had to do is talk to them. They are the adults, just talk to them and tell them that this is an issue of safety. You don't have to write tickets, they don't have to go through that court system. And I am pretty upset about that whole process, and I will be taking that up, because we can't have this, I don't know if it's the zero tolerance initiative, but we cannot have particularly good students going through this system when all they did was walk across the street. It just does not make sense. And then, I do have a question in reference to the Wilson High School incident. This teacher, if that is the case, if this, well, even if it's not the case, I guess my question is, is she still in the classroom? And in my opinion, that this teacher, if these are the accusations, should not be in the classroom with those students. So if I can get the superintendent to respond to that, I'd appreciate that, or tell me if I'm out of line with asking this question at this time.
No, the teacher has been relieved of duty pending investigation.
All right, thank you very much. Now, in reference to the graduation report, in your, in your report that you gave us, Superintendent Bizard, you indicate, you showed us that there were schools that are requiring credits that exceed the state standard. The state standard is twenty-two credits, and we have eleven schools who are requiring at least twenty-five credits to graduate. I guess I don't understand that and why that was put into effect. My position would be, if we have students who are meeting the requirements for twenty-two credits, which are the state standards, then why would students want to continue in school, in high school, when they can go to college or start college? On some levels, it just doesn't make sense to me. And my question would be, Superintendent Bizard, how many of the students who perhaps have dropped out because they could not reach the twenty-six, the twenty-five point five or the twenty-seven point five requirements to get a diploma in our school system?
I don't have numbers on numbers who dropped out, but in terms of the graduation requirement, a number of schools may have different requirements because of the programs that they offer. For example, in a CTE school or career tech education school, many students take a number of electives beyond the regular core academic requirements. I'm not sure about SODA, for example, but they may have art courses or music courses that go beyond what would normally be required by New York State. But the fact is, no matter what a school requires for graduation, that the requirement by the state is twenty-two credits in the key areas that we outlined, and the five regions, so a child can get a diploma without meeting the extra requirements imposed by a school. But certainly, you know, we don't discourage schools from pushing conversations, but we can get numbers and begin to ask the kinds, those kinds of questions. But again, my experience is that many of the kids who drop out tend not to drop out for those reasons.
Tend not to drop out?
Not for those reasons, exactly, for the extra requirements.
Well, we don't know that.
We don't have the numbers.
Data.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, how many parents are aware that it's this, that the requirements for these particular schools are more than twenty-two? And if they have choice, if the students met the requirements of the state, would be able to graduate? In other words, if, for example, Biosciences Health Careers High School at Franklin requires twenty-six point five credits to graduate, if that student, for example, met the state requirements, would that student be able to get a diploma?
If they meet the twenty-two credits in the right, the key areas outlined by the state, and the five regions, they can get a diploma.
All right, do they know that, and do we have a system in place?
Last week was the first time, I believe, in the history that we actually outlined this to students and parents in the district, so they are clear. And of course, we'll probably use our parent meetings to make sure that that message is clear, that parents understand. It's tricky, again, because we need to make sure people understand it's not just twenty-two credits, but twenty-two credits in the right areas, because you can have twenty-two credits and not have enough math credits, for example, and not get a diploma. So again, part of the goal is to make sure parents understand what is required for graduation and that students are, but at the same time, to not water down the level of rigor in our schools.
It could be rigorous with twenty-two credits, in my opinion.
It can be.
All right.
Yes.
Global, well, not necessarily global studies, but do we have, are there, is every course that is required for graduation being offered in these schools? We had an issue with global studies wasn't being offered. Are every, is there, is every course that is required for graduation offered in all of our schools?
Well, the answer has to be yes, otherwise, they cannot, principals cannot certify diplomas of students, and if they are, they can lose their certification to practice. But we can ask the question, but again, I mean, I don't have numbers on every single school, but I would venture to say that, you know, it would be foolish for an administration not to offer the courses toward graduation, because again, principals have to certify the diplomas of every single student, and that whenever they do that, they're putting the certifications on the line.
In reference to the budget, I, as being a member of the finance committee, and I looked at the budget, less than twelve million dollars is being expended for instructional supplies in the classroom. And I talk about human resource spending, less than twelve million is being spent in the classroom. And when I go to schools, what I hear teachers say is that they have to come, and principals, is that they have to come out of their own pockets for supplies. What I'd like to see done, and I think you have mentioned this, but I'd like for you to talk about it a little more, is to reconfigure the budget so that it addresses the needs of each school. Can you talk about that, sir?
The answer is yes. I mean, it's part of our entry plan to look at, to do a financial analysis, or financial alignment, to see exactly how much money is being driven down to our schools. And I've said publicly that we need to make sure that whatever we do, we never touch classrooms and to push as much money as possible into our classroom. That is part of the plan. We will go, again, with the, with the support of the board and the schools, the plan eventually is to try to go to a school-based budgeting, to making sure, again, that the money resides in schools. That takes, will take some work. One, in making sure that we have the right kinds of fiscal oversight, to making sure that principals are spending money appropriately. And number two, to build the capacity of the people who are leading the schools, to making sure they understand how to budget the school properly. So that's part of the plan, short term, to look at the alignment, to push as much money as possible. And number two, to making sure that we begin to drive the funding, much more funding to our schools.
And one more question, President Evans, to Superintendent Bizard. Where is the unions in this endeavor? Because nationally, we know that it's been unions who've been the obstacles to educational academic achievement because of the rules and the regulations. Where are our unions in terms of the goals that we are setting to educate our children?
So far, the unions have been very supportive in the work that we need to do. The RCA, Bente, and ASAR, we've met with those folks, and they've been very supportive in the work that we need to do. Of course, as we get much more specific about the reform, we'll keep going back and having conversations, but so far, the relationships have been very cordial.
Because we can't have only protection of teachers or protection of administrators without also protecting children and protecting children's success. That's very important, Superintendent Bizard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
What I'd like to say is thank you, because there's nothing more powerful than having data and cold, hard facts. And what's even more powerful is hearing solutions, and on top of that, action. And so I think that that's great, and that's just a beginning of what's to come. And hopefully, in the future, what our goal is to be more proactive with these seniors. So thank you.
Thank you.
President Garcia, can I comment on Ms. Elliott's comment, please?
President Garcia? President Garcia, he's in Florida, he's in Florida playing golf, but student rep, yes, I will, I will come back to you after I'm finished with the rest of the commissioners, and we'll come back to you, okay?
Commissioner Brennan?
I'm really a lot more interested in what she has to say than what I have to say, actually. If you can't improve on silence, you shouldn't try, so I won't, except to say thank you. I think you're on the right track, and we have a lot more work to do, obviously.
Yes, we do, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Student Representative Washington?
Okay, about the jaywalking at Charlotte, seeing how I'm a student from Charlotte, seeing how we have so many issues and so much media coverage with everything that has been taking place at our school, we have upped the security, so we do have a lot more police officers and sentries in our school. About the jaywalking, only time a student should be outside of class is most likely when they're getting off the bus, being late to school. Other than that, they should be in class, they should have been in the streets at that time. So I would personally think that the ticket was to deter students, other students, from even being outside at that time, so that could have been a process. Even though I do agree with you solely on that, you know, as students and as younger adults, we shouldn't be in the system that early, but at the same time, they should have been outside of class unless they were getting off the RTS bus, coming to school late. That's the only reason why they should have been outside. Even seniors, this year, we have bus schedules, we have no reason to be outside of school for any purpose.
All right, let me beg to differ, if I may, President Evans.
Briefly, then we need to move on.
Because I have been to the school, and I have seen students who have been outside, and they have said to me that they were permitted to go out, and I know that the principals have allowed those students to be outside, so they are supposed to be outside for more than just getting off the bus, coming to school. There are certain programs that have allowed them to get off, to go outside of the class, even if they're not getting, even if they're getting off the bus, aside from getting off the bus, going to the classroom. So you could check with your principal about that, because that is what she's indicated to me, because I have wanted them to be in the classroom, and they've said to me that they have permission to be out there, okay?
I think, just this thing, for these students, I hope that if they do have to go through court, that they can go through teen court. A lot of folks don't know, we have a teen court program, and their records can be, hopefully be wiped clean with this, with this jaywalking situation, hopefully go through community service.
Thank you.
In between, in between Superintendent and Ms. Elliott's comments, I think with the graduation rates, seeing how so many transitions take place from ninth through twelfth, with coming from other schools, maybe from Douglas to maybe Charlotte, I think counselors, high school counselors, they should really be up on their jobs, because that's solely on their part, too. If you're not placing these classes on a student's schedule, that's kind of your fault, too. Each student doesn't know what they're supposed to take that year, each student is not always informed. So if counselors were more up and telling the student, listen, instead of taking this elective, you need to be in this class, I think that has a lot to do with it also. Because I've spoken to a lot of students myself, and they've told me, well, girl, I didn't know I was supposed to be taking that in ninth grade, which I think is a shame. Which I think is a shame.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
You're welcome.
Now, we will move on to board reports, number five, and we're going to go back to our student representative, Ms. Washington, report from the Student Leadership Congress.
I'm just going to turn the volume. Student Leadership Congress, our basic plan right now is the superintendent forum. So yes, everything is really based around him. The superintendent forum will be at Dr. Freddie Thomas High School, Thursday, January 31st, from nine to 10:30 in this auditorium. Students will basically be asking him questions for a chance for the youth to get to know him, get answers, and announce their problems or concerns about their school, and any issues that they want to address towards him that night. As you all know, before he was even chosen to be a candidate for the superintendent, it was a forum for all the dots, so this one is basically for the students, targeting the students. In previous meetings, I announced that we were going to have a mayor's youth conference, and he was supposed to schedule something with us in February, however, he has now changed his dates to March, so hopefully, Student Leadership Congress will be meeting with the mayor in March. Thank you, that concludes mine.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Just to report that we will have the initial audit committee meeting on Tuesday, February 12th at 5:30.
February 12th at 5:30. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Powell, finance?
The finance committee met on Thursday, January 17th. We actually had a rather light agenda, resolutions 460 through 467 and resolution 472 were considered and all were forwarded from committee to the full board. The brevity of our agenda did not translate into a brief meeting, however, as some of...
I heard.
In part because we did have a guest, Alan Williams joined us, and I wanted to make sure that every opportunity was provided to answer questions, so that, you know, in order, in part to forestall any questions that might come at the last minute here in front of the full board. So the agenda's brief, there is nothing of real contention in the agenda. The resolutions 460 is an information technology resolution, 461 through 466 have to do with facilities, including the Maple Street facility. Resolution 467, procurement and supply, and resolution 472 are other matters, namely the contract with a legal firm to discuss SEG issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell, any finance, finance reports this month, financial reports?
Oh, the financial reports were approved by the full board, are they, did they make it to the...
They were in the packet, I believe.
Okay, so you all did see them in your board packet on Friday. I would move that we approve those financial reports, they were approved by the committee.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. All those in favor of approving the monthly financial reports which you received in your packet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Malik, for reminding me. We will be meeting February 21st, our next regular scheduled meeting, and we have established the dates for the public hearings for the budget cycle, as well as the dates for our board deliberations come the budget cycle. I need not belabor those dates right now.
Those dates will be released, I'm sure. Thank you.
I think they've already been published electronically for the members of the board already.
Right, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner White?
Yes. President Evans, I want to say that I am honored to be able to serve with Commissioners Campos and Williams. They will be, we will be working together on the Quality Assurance Committee's agenda for this year. Our first meeting is set for Thursday, January 28th. That's at six, oh, 5:30, Hesawari. I think it's 5:30, 5:30. Everyone is invited to attend at that meeting. At that meeting, we will discuss our mission, our vision, and duties of the Quality Assurance Committee. We will also approve the SER report. And finally, we will discuss our goals for 2008. The following meeting, if anybody has their Palm Pilot, will be set for February 20th, again at 5:30. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Elliott.
We, the Governor's Committee, will meet on Monday, January 28th, where we will discuss the goals for this year. We will also discuss the board's self-evaluation. We will also look at supervision of board staff, and also what we would like our consultant for the board to accomplish for us for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner Campos.
I have a rather lengthy report. But before I get into my report, first thing that I would like to thank, the people that I would like to thank is the board staff for helping make this transition very easy and for being so accommodating and wonderful. The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, we met on Tuesday, January 22nd, and joining us was President Evans and also Commissioner Elliott. There were four agenda items. First, we discussed a proposed partnership between the local laborers' union and the School of Applied Technology at Edison, and the partnership could be a way to increase graduation rates, bring modern industry standards into the classroom, and provide students with a viable career path after high school. So next steps are to consult with the superintendent regarding whether this proposal will dovetail with his strategic plan, and if so, we'll hear from the Edison staff and perhaps make a visit to Newburgh City Schools, which has a comparable program. And we reviewed this matter in conjunction with Policy 200, Section 6, which refers to the development of programs and services that encourage cooperative interaction among the community at large, district staff, and students. Number two, bear with me. We also discussed the facilities modernization project. The immediate next step appears to be the creation of the Rochester School Construction Board, which is to have three members appointed by the superintendent, three by the mayor, and the seventh is one that they mutually agree upon. Commissioner Elliott raised the question on the minority women business enterprises' participation. And upon further research and in collaboration with colleagues, I believe we will ask the firm hired to write the strategic master plan for that, for achieving maximum MWBE participation to attend future CIGR meeting, to share this plan for us. And we reviewed this matter in conjunction with the Policy 7000, Section 3, with, which refers to the boards of responsibility to provide appropriate facilities to support a quality educational program. Third, we are working on the final draft of the 2000 legislative agenda and plan to move forward with board approval on February 28th at the business meeting. And lastly, I also move that the board approve the following proclamation, and I really believe that this is particularly important in light of recent events, because I believe that it really reaffirms what the board's belief and the district's commitment is to mutual respect. And the proclamation reads, whereas from January 21st to the 27th, 2008, the Rochester City School District is partnering with the Gay Alliance of Genesee Valley and the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network in conjunction with Simon &amp; Schuster Children's Publishing to honor the Fourth Annual National No Name Calling Week. And 15 Olwayis Bullying Prevention Program implementation sites are taking part in a week of educational activities that are aimed at stop, at stopping name-calling and verbal bullying of all kinds. And the Board of Education recognizes that words hurt and have the power to make students feel unsafe, to the point they are no longer able to perform in school or conduct normal lives. And success will not occur overnight. Our patience and continued commitment to bullying prevention are imperative. And January 21st to the 27th, 2008, has been designated as No Name Calling Week, calling on all Americans to show their support for a bully-free school and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rochester Board of Education does hereby proclaim January 21st to the 27th, 2008, as No Name Calling Week in the Rochester City School District, and encourages all schools, parents, and staff to join the rest of the nation in promoting the end of name-calling and bullying in our schools.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Powell to designate this week No Name Calling Week. Campos, sorry, Commissioner Campos, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Sorry, I called you the wrong name. I hope that doesn't count, though, right? All those in favor of designating No Name Calling this week, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Anything else?
And, no, that concludes my report, and our next meeting is Wednesday, February 13th at 5:30.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner...
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, Commissioner Powell, point of personal privilege.
Commissioner Campos, I trust that the text of that resolution is being turned over to the board clerk. Would it be possible for all of us to get a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Brennan, policy.
Policy Committee is scheduled to meet January 30th at 6:00 p.m. Our agenda includes amendments to Policy 5153, the parent preference managed choice policy, which, those amendments which were forwarded from the ad hoc committee dealing with that subject spearheaded by Commissioners Powell and Thompson. In addition to that, there will be discussion of an amendment to Policy 5100, attendance, which would undertake to increase the dropout age from 16 to 17. We would like to raise it actually to 18, but that requires state legislation, and I hope that that will actually be part of our legislative agenda, which will be addressed subsequently. We will be reviewing the parent involvement policy and review of Policy 4511, our textbooks, specifically Section 1, which stipulates that books used as the principal source of information for a course are issued to each student in the class. That committee will examine what policies are to be reviewed annually and discuss a 2008 schedule for this review. It's my understanding we have some 30 policies that already, that are already overdue for review, and it's my expectation that we will be having a much more vigorous schedule this year than we have in the past to get on top of that. And that will involve a number of subjects, including an approach to transparency, whether that is through a specific policy or a series of policies to make the school district more transparent with reference not only to the public's access to information that they should have, but the board's access. So I look forward to that and look forward to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Looks like the Policy Committee's got a full agenda this year.
For a change, yeah.
Good luck with that. I have an extremely brief report. The flag outside Central Office was flown at half-staff last week in recognition of the funeral of Marcus Rafford, a student at Franklin Bioscience. Our hearts go out to Marcus's family and the students at Franklin during this time, during this tremendously, tremendously difficult time. I visited the Rochester Child First Network Program and the Rochester Preschool Parent Program adjacent to School 12 recently, and also met with Lloyd Van Arken of the Children's Institute. Materials from the institute will be included in your Friday packet. I look forward to the beneficial partnership with these two organizations on behalf of our students and families. I also visited Schools 4, 8, and 20. It was a day well spent in getting a chance to talk with our principals and staff members and seeing them in action. Good news, School 4, George Martha School, School Number 4, was recently recognized by the New York State Education Department as only one of two schools in which, in the state, to earn the distinguished school award this year. School 4, which has an 89% student poverty rate, won the award for dramatically increasing student performance in ELA and math, and significantly reducing the gap in performance among subgroups of students. Karen Johnson, who's the principal, is going to accept this award for School 4 later this month at a national conference, state conference for Title I directives in Tennessee. What I liked from the principal was she said, it's great to celebrate, but we still got a lot of work to do. So I want to congratulate School 4 for that great accomplishment. Also, congratulations to our student reps. She received the Martin Luther King Award for Peace on January 15th. Myself and the superintendent had the honor to present those medals to the students, and congratulations to all our students for modeling the principles of Dr. King. Sometimes I think our students can serve as role models for us, and we can learn a lot more from them sometimes than what they get from us. And lastly, thank you to Mount Vernon Church. On January 16th, they hosted a Welcome to Rochester reception for John Claude. I think he was very well received, and we want to thank you for that. I had one more quick question for the superintendent before we move on to resolutions. We got some good news today on the RTS litigation and our students being able to continue using RTS buses in a decision from Judge Larimer. And I don't know if you just wanted to comment on that, because you didn't mention it in your report.
Absolutely, and I apologize for that. There was a press release, we had a press conference also this afternoon with the RTS people. The fact is that that will allow us a savings of approximately $2 million between now and June 30th. And if we did, if we lost this case, would have cost the district about $12 million next year in additional transportation costs. So certainly was a big win for our students, I think. We'll have to do some modifications in our transportation and the way we transport high school students. But this morning, I had the opportunity of talking to two of our high school kids who were here during the taping, and they were very happy with the decision. They said they would rather be on the RTS buses than what they referred to as cheese buses. So certainly, in terms of dollars, was really a big win for our students. Took quite a bit of pressure. When I walked in on January 2nd, and right before that, the Cala gave me the news, and of course, as soon as I walked in, the legal department, the legal team here, gave me the heads up. And of course, quite a bit of stress in thinking about what could have happened. But the fact is that it didn't happen, and we're very grateful to the judge.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Commissioner White.
Mr. President, before you transition to your report from Commissioner Brennan's report, on the issue of books, I wanted to say during the policy report that special thanks should be given to Valerie Johnson and Rosemary Rivera. Additionally, you can go ahead and applaud. As many of you know, these citizens are really the watchdog, them along with many other citizens. And they brought this issue to my attention and to a number of other commissioners' attention about the books, which we believed had been resolved, quite frankly. And were it not for Valerie and Rosemary, this issue would not have been once again brought to our attention, and we have a good superintendent who immediately got on. And I also want to thank Marilyn Patterson-Grant, who called me. I was getting ready to go into Burlington Coat Factory, and she got me on my cell phone. It was like 8:30 at night. She took Valerie and Rosemary's concerns to heart, called me until I had received a comprehensive explanation, which was not good. I mean, we found out that in fact, students did not have books. But this administration got right on top of it, so I thought recognition should go to our citizen servants, as well as our administration that got on top of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Evans?
Thank you, Commissioner White, and thank you to those citizens. Commissioner Elliott.
Just a couple of other questions in reference to the graduation report. What is the graduation goal for 2008?
We'll have, as required again by contract, we'll have those outlined for you by the end of February, exactly what the number is going to be.
Okay, what the graduation goal will be.
Yes, absolutely. And we'll have goals, again, by, I believe, the requirement is by August 1st for the next year as well. But we'll have concrete numbers.
For June 2008, and then '08, '09?
The answer is yes. We'll have that for you. And as part of our strategy, we'll have a scorecard, we'll have concrete numbers, not just for graduation, but different grades, configurations from elementary to 12th grade.
And just one other thing I forgot to ask when the superintendent was making his report. I talked about my involvement at a committee on special education hearing, and I was so twisted, as a result of that process, that you had nine district personnel. Thankfully, the parent had me there and another representative. But I came away feeling, from that experience, intimidated. And then left there, as I said, feeling twisted, and as if, it was as if the parent was doing something wrong. And so I know that you're looking in on this whole, this whole special, special education issue, but even the space in which you have to wait to be seen, and then the space that you go in, it just does not bode well for a collaborative relationship between our parents and our district, and for academic achievement of our children. And I wanted to put that on the record. And also to say that if there are parents out there who've had these kinds of experiences, that they contact me, or they contact the superintendent, so that we can hear what's been going on in those sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. We will now move on to resolutions. Just a brief explanation for folks that may not know, folks at home, and also if you've never attended a school board meeting before. Board members receive resolution packets two weeks in advance. Board members are instructed to submit questions throughout that two-week period, and we've also recently instituted board study sessions where board members have the opportunity to ask in-depth questions around the resolutions in preparation for the, for the meetings. The public are invited to those study sessions also. So for the benefit of those who want to find out more about the individual resolutions that we'll be voting on, committee meetings are also a great place to stop by, because a lot of these resolutions run through committee, particularly the Finance Committee, which is known for having lengthy meetings around a lot of the resolutions that are in the packet. So I just wanted to give that explanation to the benefit of those at home, and also to our folks, folks in the audience. So we'll move on to item number five, consideration of resolutions. And I will be remiss if I didn't thank administration and my colleagues for their questions, and also the timeliness of getting back the answers, and my colleagues for asking the questions in a timely manner. Not to say that there won't be questions here tonight, but I did want to put that out there. So we'll begin with consideration of resolutions, Resolutions 2007, '08, Human Resources Resolutions, 427 through 459, motion to approve.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White, moved by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion or questions around Resolutions 427 through 459, Human Resources?
Mr. President, Resolution 452, at the risk of highlighting a particular employee or prospective employee, and drawing unnecessary attention to him, and folks concluding that his position is more important than anybody else's, let me preface my remarks by saying his position is not. But I did feel a particular need to make a statement about Resolution 452 and one of the prospective employees who's mentioned there. James Shepard is being wisely recommended to this board as Director of Security Operations. This is, once again, a very significant appointment, and I think our community is very blessed and honored to have a superintendent who would be wise enough to seek counsel of people throughout this community, who invariably must have told him that this is a top-notch public servant, James Shepard is. We are very blessed to be able to be in a position to vote on this resolution in support of James Shepard, bringing all of his experience. When I met him, I was a young prosecutor in the Monroe County DA's office, and I believe he was assigned to the narcotics unit. He reached all the way up to Deputy Chief of Police. This is a high-ranking appointment. I think it shows this administration's commitment to public safety in our schools. So Superintendent Bazzard, I congratulate you, and I congratulate this board in advance of what I believe will be a wise vote to endorse the appointment of James Shepard as Director of Security Operations.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any, any questions, comments, or concerns on the resolutions that you have for your Human Resources Resolution?
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
In reference to the resolutions where we find that we're paying staff to attend professional development seminars, I guess I have, I don't guess, I have an issue that we would do that, because my question would be, isn't that a part of their job to do professional development seminars, and why are we paying them? And I guess, no, I don't guess, President Evans, we need to really look at that. The reason that I am real adamant about where we're spending our money is because less than $12 million is going into the classrooms for instructional supplies. And somehow, we have to renegotiate, in my view, this whole notion of paying people to go to seminars. On my job, they don't pay me for going to a seminar. I have to go, because it's a part of my job. And so I think that we need to, President Evans, reconsider, you know, how we're spending money in our human, with respect to human resource expenditures, because we've got to get more money into the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Anything else on resolutions before I do? I'm going to do a roll call vote, because... I'm going to do a roll call vote because there's 427 through 459 on Human Resources Resolutions. Just so you all know, our student rep cast an advisory board on all of our resolutions with the exception of Human Resources Resolutions. So we're going to start with a roll call vote on Human Resources. Commissioner Williams, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yes, I have one question, just a point of clarification. I'd like Mrs. Cottrell to weigh in on, this is Resolution 427 to 450, and the question came up about the liability the district would face. In your response was, I just want to clarify, about the wording of the appointment letter, and then you go on to say that presently the district could be exposed if the board were to reject an appointment.
Just really quick, just a real quick point of order. I'm going to take that to the superintendent, and then you can call on whoever from your staff you wanted to.
Well, she said, "What are you doing, Rita?" I was going to stop.
Commissioner Williams? Please, a little bit of the appointment letters. Appointment letters are now consistent across the board. We would like the opportunity-
Is there a microphone?
We would like the opportunity to make them consistent across the board. I feel that the language in some letters is stronger than the language in others with regard to making sure the employees understand that the appointment is contingent upon board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner, we're going to start on my left with Commissioner Brennan. How do you vote on Resolutions 427 through 459?
Yes.
Okay, yes for Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Yes? Commissioner Elliott, 427, 429?
No on 427 to 432, 447 through 452, 445, no.
No, okay. Commissioner, I mean, Madam Clerk, did you catch those? Can you repeat those again?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Elliott?
427 through 432, 447 through 452, and 454.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner White, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to Resolution 460, Information Technology. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 460.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Questions, comments, concerns around discussion around Resolution 460 for Celt Corporation. Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 460, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolution is passed.
You didn't ask for no.
Okay.
No.
Any nos? Nos, okay. No by Commissioner Elliott. We'll move on to Resolution 461 through 466, Educational Facilities. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Campos. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions 461 through 466, Educational Facilities? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I didn't think we could abstain.
Well, you can if you have a family member working somewhere, or if you're on the payroll there, you can't abstain. Next, we'll move up to Procurement and Supply, Resolution 467. Motion to approve 467?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott, moved by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments or concerns around Resolutions 467? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolution 467, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, Resolution 467. Last set of resolutions are 468 through 474. I will entertain a motion to approve those resolutions.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Questions, comments, concerns around Resolutions 468 through 474?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Elliott, then I'll move to Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Elliott?
In reference to the Monroe Community College Program, that agreement, could we get more information on this? I don't know if we did or not. I didn't see it. I would like to just have this information about this program to review myself. This may be something that we may also want to participate in over at Baden Street, but I'd like to get more information about this program. But I would ask this particular question. Have we had students from this district to graduate as a result of participating in this program?
I know this question did come up in the study session. Mr. Superintendent?
Sure, Kim, Kim Dice?
The program just started, so we don't have that information yet. We have the second cohort, which started on Tuesday.
How many kids are we talking about?
Forty-four started in the first cohort. Forty-four are starting, started this Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And in reference to Resolution 470, where we entered into an agreement with Hillside Children's Center, my concern here is the number, do we have, does Hillside Children's Center have people who are working with our students who have demonstrated success of working in the urban environment? And do, are there people, are there employees of Hillside Children's Center who look like the students who are participating in this program?
If I can ask Nidia, she's here, Nidia? Are you familiar with riggers? You responded to questions for us?
Commissioner Elliott, how you doing? I have to tell you that the diversity of the staff that work with Hillside Children's Center is very diverse.
Yes.
That's the most I can tell you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Anything further?
Yes, in reference to Resolution 471, we are entered into an agreement with James Wallace, who is out in Pittsburgh to provide psychiatric consultations on an as-needed basis. Does Dr. Wallace have a background of demonstrated success with working with children from an urban environment, and an understanding of the culture, so that we have a great impact on providing the kind of services that will prove to be positive for our students? Does he have that background?
Mr. Superintendent?
Sure, Nidia, if you would mind coming back up again? Okay, Kirsten, I guess.
Commissioner, Dr. Wallace has performed psychiatric evaluations for students in the district for 20 years. The evaluations that I have seen have proven to be accurate and informative.
All right, now, that's not my question, though. My question was, does he have demonstrated experience of working in the urban environment? Has he worked with us, has, does he have the experience?
He's worked with us for 20 years.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams, and then Commissioner Powell?
Just want to express two areas of concern. One, the first one with Resolution 470, and I'd ask for some data in terms of just how effective the program has been, because I take it this, it's an ongoing program, which I have not, apparently no data is available.
Okay.
So that's my first area of concern. The second area of concern is with Resolution 471, when I asked for some of the data in terms of how many students are, were served, or have been served by Dr. Wallace, as well as the amount of time that he spends. When you look at it on a per-hour basis, the cost just seems excessive in terms of, you know, what we're paying. It seems as if it comes out in excess of over $200 an hour, which I think is, even for psychiatric care, is quite a bit.
We'll look, we'll get data for, on numbers 470, and we'll look at comparable prices for 471 and compare prices.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
I just wanted to call the audience's attention to the last seven resolutions, which are gifts and donations to our schools, and say thank you to Matthew Orlando for his donation to science, for science field trips to Franklin, to Walmart for their contribution to School 28, the estate of Eva Feld for her contribution to School 16, R G and E for their donation to the Green Schools Program, to Verizon for their donation of books to School 6, and Robert Meadows, his donation to theater materials for School of the Arts, and finally to Baushan Lum for their contribution toward field trips to School Number 9. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell, and I'll make sure that we will follow up with the letter from the board on that. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Evans, on that. The resolution that Mrs. Powell was talking about, who in the district, once the funds come in, who in the district manages those funds to make sure that they are spent in accordance with the donor's wishes?
You know, it's a great question. And in fact, we begin to look at exactly how those monies float from the district to the schools. In many cases, it gets to the school and it's spent well. In some cases, it sits here for months before it actually gets to where it needs to go to. But that process is something we're looking at right now. I don't have an answer.
And you may have missed one, thank you, I'm not sure. Mr. Superintendent, you said Staples with?
Yes, Staples gave a large donation to the schools and the children's, and I don't have the exact amount, I'm not sure if our liaison is here today, but Staples gave a tremendous amount of money. Thank you, $40,000 of Staples.
So, thank you, Staples.
I don't think it made it into our board packet.
I believe it came after the board.
Okay, so it'll be on next month.
Yes.
Thank you.
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Campos?
Just one thing in regards to Commissioner Elliott's questions. At our study session, one of the things that we discussed is being able to have easy access to all of the community partnerships that we have, and now start documenting results so that we do have this at our fingertips, and we do have this data. And I think that that's something that Superintendent Bressard is all about, data, and that's something that this board is really about. So I think that those questions are definitely valid, and that's something that they're looking at. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. I'll call the question on Resolution 468 through 474, unless there are any more questions, comments, or concerns. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Any abstentions?
Any, oh, any abstentions? Sorry about that, yes.
An abstention for Resolution 470 and 471.
Okay.
On the grounds of?
Well, on the grounds of, the programs may well be effective, but I just-
Okay, so you just have to vote no then?
Point of order.
Okay, you can vote no, okay, yeah. So we have one no then. We only, our bylaws state that we only can abstain if we have a personal connection with the organization or a family member working for them. Otherwise, we have to vote no.
Then let the record show for 470 and 471.
No then, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We will now move on to unfinished business from previous meetings. Do we have any? No. We'll move on to new business. I believe, Mr. Vice President, you had an item.
Yes, very briefly. I have, for the last several months, I have been discussing with my colleagues a proposed resolution that relates to potential violations of the human rights and civil rights laws. As you all are aware, Section 296 of the New York State Executive Law prohibits employers from discriminating against people of color, women, certain protected groups. You also are aware that Title VII of the federal law prohibits discrimination similarly. Employers cannot discriminate against people in protected classes. We thankfully have a board that has policies that mimic these federal and state anti-discrimination laws. Specifically, we have responsible bidder policy 6725. We also have board policy 6750. Both of these policies, in a nutshell, ensure that we have anti-discrimination practices here in the district. What I did notice in reviewing these district policies, that specifically, Board Policy 6725, talks about the need for responsible bidders. I noticed that in making sure that our district had responsible bidders, we required that the Director of Procurement Services and Supplies made sure that potential bidders did not have pending OSHA violations, were not in willful non-compliance with labor law. We also required that our Director of Procurement and Supply ensure that these bidders were responsible insofar as they were compliant with workers' compensation law, that they were in compliance with environmental conservation law. And then, as Commissioner Powell correctly points out, there's sort of a catch-all phrase at the end of 6725 that says, "And the Director of Supply and Procurement should look at other issues." I think, quite frankly, Mr. President and my colleagues, that this policy ought to be amended to specifically say that the Director of Procurement and Supply should also consider whether a bidder is in violation of New York State human rights laws, or in violation of the federal civil rights laws. It's a very simple proposal, and I have respectfully requested that my colleague Brennan, Commissioner Brennan, who chairs policy, take this issue up. I have prepared a resolution that addresses the history here. It is available to the public. I'll give it to the clerk. But my motion this time, Mr. President, is that this particular resolution be forwarded to the Policy Committee for consideration as an amendment to 6725. Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there a second? I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. I'll call, any discussion, questions, or comments around forwarding this item to the Policy Committee? I'm sure we will hear more on this as the weeks unfold. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of forwarding the resolution to the Policy Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The item is forwarded.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We will now move to the, one more item. Commissioner Powell?
It's not so much an item, but I didn't know where else to raise the question. In the course of our meeting, there have been a number of questions that came up, some after the superintendent's report, some after board reports, some in the course of our resolution processing. And I would just seek support from my colleagues that questions not immediately related to those various reports or those resolutions be parking-lotted until we get to this stage, the new business. We often are limited as to our access to the superintendent. We all have dozens of questions that we'd like to download on him and his staff, but I think it would be prudent for us to follow some protocols as to when those questions are raised. And if they're not directly related to the superintendent's report, perhaps new business is the place for it.
Thanks, but I just don't want to make new business a long item each time, so that's why I, as chair, sometimes I do entertain questions from time to time, but I don't want new business to come into a long session.
I guess it's a, if the question's going to come up-
Right.
-then better that they all accumulate in one convenient place instead of what I refer to as a shotgun approach.
Right, thanks. We'll move on to speakers not addressing an agenda item. We have 15 speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes, so I would ask that you adhere to the three-minute rule. We're going to start with Steve Echol. Steve Echol will be followed by Nea Frost, and then Howard Eagle.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome to Rochester Superintendent Bressard. Many of you know me wearing a very different hat, but today I stand before you as one of the many involved and caring parents at the Franklin Montessori School. This Tuesday, the day after our observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, as we remembered his leadership in the struggle towards equality, justice, and peace, Franklin Montessori parents opened their mailboxes to a letter from their PTO officers informing them of a fight, a high school fight, that occurred in the Montessori School in front of the door of a primary classroom with children ages four to six years old. This fight occurred two weeks ago today on January 10th, ironically, the day after Commissioner White addressed a crowd of Montessori parents, teachers, and staff at our monthly PTO meeting. It took the school resource officer, a large and very heroic Montessori dad, and at least four centuries, mace and handcuffs to subdue the teens and break up the fight. No one told the parents. No one notified me that this horrific, horribly dangerous fight happened outside the doorway to my five-year-old son's classroom. My son, who has a hard time watching Dora the Explorer because the exploits of Swiper are bad and scary, he knows what's wrong to do. And- because the exploits of Swiper are bad and scary, he knows what's wrong to do. And he is faced with live demonstrations of some of the worst behaviors regularly at his school. Sadly, there are many parents who won't even consider the Montessori School despite the stellar quality of this educational method because of its location at the Franklin Educational Campus. But I chose Montessori because I thought I could trust the school administration with his safety, but I shouldn't have. Just this year, parents have been left into the, in the dark of about at least two or three gas leaks and subsequent evacuation of our students. We were not told about mace that was used to break up another fight, high school fight that occurred just around the corner from the open hall entrance to our school. That mace impacted our students with the smallest taking the brunt. Our children have been in lockdown two times that I know of. Montessori education is developed around a fundamental respect for all life and the practice of peace. Meanwhile, our students listen to cursing of teens, see mimicked sexual acts, have witnessed fights. One family reports their sons were playing handcuffs the other day. They don't watch commercial TV.
Please conclude, Mr. Echol.
I will do it as fast as I can. Thank you. When we, when asked where they got that game from, their five-year-old replied that he saw it at school. It is wrong to expose children to the violence. We know this. What we need is a fully separated school, parent involvement in all safety changes and all changes at the school, parent notification. It is my right as a parent to know what is happening around my child. If something good comes of this terrible, dangerous fight in our halls, it is this: The district is starting to listen. Some changes have been made. The superintendent is listening. We thank you. We simply ask that parents are welcome to the table until our pushing, after this fight, no one was listening. We look forward to moving together in a positive direction. Montessori is a hundred-year-old educational philosophy. This is not, excuse me, it's a hundred-year-old education philosophy practiced the world over. We are proud that Rochester City School District offers this to our children. Please allow this program to grow in peace and safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Nea Frost, followed by Howard Eagle.
Hello to everyone. I am a parent of a child that goes to Franklin Montessori. And I wasn't quite sure what I was going to say, except I was there during the first macing incident. I was in the school visiting my son that day, and I was also there with my two-year-old daughter and my four-month-old grandson. And I have to tell you, the mace in the hallway that I was in brought me to my knees. And as a parent, I was horrified. And then I was angry. That is unacceptable for my child, my four-year-old child. This is his first year in school, to be subject to that type of behavior and for mace twice where he was affected. He does have asthma, so he is severely affected by those things. There was also three gas leaks. I was in the school for a parent-teacher conference that day during a gas leak, again, with my two-year-old and my four-month-old godson. Unacceptable. And I think as a school and as a board, we should be ashamed to even be able to say that those things have happened. Commissioner Campos put a proclamation about verbal security. How about physical security? As a Christian, as a Christian, it says that I can be angry and sin not. I am angry. I'm not going to sin because I'm telling you, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a Christian, as a mother, as a wife, I am angry. And you all should be ashamed if one more incident happens in that school. Ashamed. It is unacceptable. We need changes, and we need them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Eagle, followed by Doris Morrison-Wallace Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking as a Rochester City School District parent, a taxpayer, Rochester City School District teacher, and a member of Rochester's anti-racism movement, more commonly known as ARM. We are here to call for the immediate resignation of Ms. Kaiser because she apparently believes that it's appropriate to refer to students as monkeys, as animals, chocolate, as in dark-skinned, and apparently she believes that it's appropriate to spray children with her water bottle. The real underlying issue is that a culture exists at Wilson and within the Rochester City School District that leaves people such as Ms. Kaiser to feel comfortable enough and to believe that it is okay to use such vile, abusive, derogatory language when referring to our students. This is not an isolated incident. This type of abusive behavior occurs more frequently than some care to admit. So it is the culture that we must uproot and replace with one that is built upon the principles of love, caring, respect for all children and families. There are those of us in ARM and other community organizations that have the expertise and who are willing and anxious to work with the superintendent, with Superintendent Bressard and the board, to help transform the culture of the Rochester City School District. Actually, the school district has a new initiative, the Department of African and African-American Studies, which can possibly be very helpful relative to reconstructing the current racist culture within the district. That is, if the leadership and the advisory group, which is working with the leadership, is allowed to adopt and implement a broad vision and mission regarding its charge and work. This is what I've been talking to you about, Commissioner White. Also, Dr. Adam Urbansky, a leader of the Rochester Teachers Association, has said publicly that he subscribes to the counseling out of teachers who don't belong in the profession. We are now presented with a golden opportunity for Dr. Urbansky to demonstrate that he is serious about this idea. Ms. Kaiser obviously does not belong in the teaching profession and needs to be counseled out. Considering the righteous indignation, don't misunderstand this statement, but it's the truth, considering the righteous indignation and anger that many of our children and parents carry around with them, I would say that educators who dare engage in the type of inappropriate behavior that Ms. Kaiser has demonstrated are lucky that some of our students or parents haven't retaliated. And we are so thankful that that has not happened. So the bottom line is that in the interest of the mental, emotional, and academic health and well-being of our children, and potentially for her own good, it is time for Ms. Kaiser and all other educators who demonstrate the kind of blatantly inappropriate disrespectful behavior that she has exhibited to find a new profession. I would like for my statement to be read into the minutes of the board.
Yes.
I also have a statement sent by representatives of Alliance for Quality Education, which they asked me to have...
Yes.
...to request that their statement be read into the minutes. I have copies for each board member.
Thank you. Please hand those to the clerk, and we will make sure they get in our Friday packet.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Doris Morrison, followed by Wallace Smith. And I remind everyone to please adhere to the three-minute time rule because we have so many speakers. Thank you. Ms. Morrison.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Doris Morrison, and I'm the parent of Lacretia Hill. Lacretia Hill is a student at Wilson commencement. And Lacretia Hill was called Chocolate-Faced Girl Wednesday in school by a teacher. I was not notified until after the investigation went on with the principal, the vice principal, or whoever. I still haven't, well, today was the first day that I was notified by the principal herself. I was notified by the vice principal, but not by the principal. My daughter, yes, she's very affected by this saying because there was two other, two other guys standing there with this teacher that knows my daughter's name is Lacretia Hill, not Chocolate-Faced Girl. So if she didn't know Lacretia's name, why she couldn't say, "Excuse me, what is her name?" You know, instead of asking the sentries, "What was Lacretia's name?" She told Lacretia, she said, the sentry said, "Excuse me, Ms. Kaiser," stood, and she said, "The Chocolate-Faced Girl in the middle right there." So at the meeting, Ms. Kaiser wasn't there, but this is what my daughter told me. Ms. Kaiser said, she said, "Oh, the girl with the chocolate phone." I started to bring Lacretia's phone. Her phone is pink. Then she said, "Oh, I said, 'The girl with the chocolate jacket.'" Lacretia's jacket is gray. You as a high school teacher, you know the difference between chocolate and gray, I mean, and pink, you know? And I'm already going through enough problems at home. I'm a single parent, and I have four children. And I'm also in the midst of, just with cancer, breast cancer. So I have enough problems at home with my kids already, you know? And it's like, I get them up every day to go to school, you know? And I'm not a perfect parent, but I'm not going to sit here and let somebody call my daughter a Chocolate-Faced Girl instead of calling her Lacretia Hill. You know, I mean, what's going to be done about this, you know? She's not a bad student. She get enough stuff going on at home, and she got to go to school and be, got to be discriminated, you know? So that's all I have to say because this is not, this is something new to me because, like I said, I haven't always been a parent, but I'm a parent now, and I'm going to stand up for me and mine. That's it.
Thank you. Wallace, Wallace Smith?
I have some prepared remarks, but I'm going to deviate because they sound pretty much like Mr. Eagle's remarks. And instead, I'm going to say that to you, Mr. President, Superintendent Bressard, members of the board, parents, students, staff, we have an elephant in our kitchen. The elephant is institutional racism. The kitchen is the educational delivery system of the Rochester City School District. Now, we can walk around and expect that elephant to disappear, wave a magic wand, but it's not going to go away until we confront it. When I send my children to school, I'm trusting them with, I'm trusting you with my most precious possession. And I, I expect my children to be treated with respect, dignity, and civility. I don't expect my children to be subject to a teacher who's supposed to be professional calling her names, monkeys, animal, chocolate, in reference to her skin color. Unacceptable. I'm asking for the immediate resignation. And as a member of the, I'm not going to let it go until this woman is removed from our children. She needs to be taken out of the building. A twenty-year-old...
Twenty-year-old.
Twenty-year student, or teacher, excuse me, should know better. But you know what? More than that, she's mentoring others under her and teaching them that it's all right. It's okay. We accept that in Rochester City School District. Uh-uh. Not today. Not now. It's time to call a stop to this nonsense. Treat the children with respect, and you'll get respect. Continue to call them names, you may get some that you don't want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Harriet Fisher...
Could you please have these remarks read into the record for me?
Be sure, Kim. Please hand those to the clerk. Thank you. We'll get those in our Friday packet. Harriet Fisher, followed by Ms. Valerie Johnson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Harriet Fisher, and I'm the vice president of the PTO at the Franklin Montessori School. My daughter Maya has been a student at the Montessori School for the last four years. She started when she was three years old, and she's now in the first grade. Not only is she able to read and write at six years old, but she can do multiplication and write in cursive. This is a wonderful, wonderful school. She, and given that Maya does come from a two-parent household with parents of college degrees, you would expect this from her, but she has friends of families, from families with single-parent households without college degrees who are doing just as well as she is at this school. So this is a wonderful, wonderful school with very wonderful, wonderful teachers, a lot of whom are here today. With that said, however, a lot of parents, including myself, have a lot of very serious concerns regarding safety at the Franklin Montessori School. This year, two global media arts classrooms were placed in the basement right across the hall from my daughter's classroom. She's in first grade. She is not going to school with high school students. I was told when I enrolled her in this school that she would be kept separate from the rest of the school. When I say to people, "My daughter goes to Franklin," they're like, "Are you crazy? You send your baby to Franklin?" And I'm like, "They keep them separate. She's safe there. She's safe at this school." But this year, that simply was not true. This year, a fight broke out, as Steve Echol mentioned, right in front of our kindergarten preschool classroom. Mace was sprayed, and that was the second time mace was sprayed to break up a fight. One of our students was hit by a car because we don't have a crossing guard, because apparently we're too small to have a crossing guard. That's unacceptable. So many things have gone wrong with this school. The placement of that high school class should have never happened in our school. Myself, along with the president of the PTO and other members of the PTO, have been writing letters since August to administrators in the school district. We have wrote letters and emails. We've done many things concerning a lot of issues that I've just mentioned. And it wasn't until last week that we got some results back, which was like five months after our first letter. We finally got a letter from the chief of elementary school saying that she's going to put up doors to separate the Montessori School from the rest of Franklin. However, that's only two doors she said she put up. There are six other ways to get into the school. We want our school completely separated from the high school. Our kids are elementary school students, and that's how we would like them to remain. They do not need to be exposed to the behavior of high school students. We want the rest of our school closed off, or we want to be placed in our own building or in a building with an elementary school, not a high school. We also want to be included in any decisions that are made concerning safety at our school because we are the parents of the school. Everybody is always talking about parents need to be involved in their child's education. We are involved. We want to be, and so we want to be listened to. So all I say is that this is a, it's a really, really wonderful school, and all we ask is that you do your part and make sure that our children, our babies, are kept safe at school.
Thank you. Ms. Valerie Johnson, followed by Anita Jones.
Good evening. I don't have a prepared statement because when I come before you, it's always on the basis of accountability, particularly for our children. And so I would say to the superintendent, when you say that we send our children to you to be educated, hold you accountable. I'm holding you accountable and this board accountable for the behaviors that our children were exposed to at Wilson, not only by the teacher, but by a culture and a climate within that building that has allowed for this plantation mentality, this hierarchy system, to have our male African-American young men in self-contained classes with this teacher being sprayed with water bottles, from a water bottle, as a way to make them pay attention. When we found out about what happened, as a community member, and I have always been very consistent with Ms. Hass establishing a relationship, a rapport that is based on integrity, and I've always told her, stuff gets to the community in real time. And I have been consistent with that in dealing with her. And so when we went up there on Tuesday, it was only because Monday was Martin Luther King Day, and we couldn't get there. And we spoke with her, myself and Mr. Smith, as community representatives, as well as parents, about what was going on. When we got into that school, it was so evident that what had been going on was rampant amongst the staff, students, and the teachers in knowing what had happened and that nothing was being done. It was as if we had emancipated our students and our few black staff that were there, which is why it was so swift that we were able to find out who the students were. We, as community members, as a part of the village, were able to find Mrs. Morrison and to support her and her daughter, as well as the young men who were exposed to these racist... to support her and her daughter, as well as the young men who were exposed to these racist, racist remarks, quicker than Mr. Bazzard knew, quicker than the board members knew, while our children had to sit in that building after having been treated this way. That we asked that the teacher be removed then. But it was very clear, and I am so disappointed in one of my board members for a comment that they made, and I realize that it is the politically correct thing to say, but at some point in time, protecting our children has to supersede contractual obligations. When a stu-, when students are being exposed to harmful practices, racist remarks, it is not just the students, it is also the staff. I cannot imagine a colleague of mine, a practitioner of mine, saying something about the students in my class, in my building, and I'm able to support them. And yet, somewhere in the accountability line, the ball was dropped and this was kept undercover.
Please conclude, Mrs. Johnson.
So I would say to Van White, who has a child there, to Alan Williams, who has a child there, to Judge Teresa Johnson, who has a child there, to John Lightfoot, who has a child there, are your children monkeys? Are your children animals? Do you want your children sprayed with water? Do you want them in a classroom where that happens? I wanna know who's protecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anita Jones followed by Ron Ring. Ms. Jones here? Mr. Ring, is Mr. Ring here today? Mr. Charlie Richardson, is he in the house tonight? Mr. Richardson would be followed by Jordan Brown.
Good evening.
President Evans, board members, Superintendent Bazzard, and the future president of the school board, Ms. Washington. Keep it up, young lady. We need more role models like you. I have handouts for you that you already have on the desk. You know, I've been here many times. I wanna talk about what the parents and our youth see as they need in the future, and they like the direction that it is now going. Number one is alternative education. We have some real opportunities in this community, as you'll see there. Another one just sprung up. In case you don't know, the Boise's Board of Education, Boise's One, closed the Rush Campus, which is a 220-acre farm that's built for technical education along with regular education. That bill before it left said that there's enough students here that could use that alternative education. The other thing I wanna talk to you about is general neighbors helping neighbors, set on the Rochester Children's Zone, Adult Education and Jobs Committee, that now I'm hearing is becoming active. And I'm also a graduate of the parent university. I think that one of the biggest things, and I think you'll probably be able to get industry to do it, is to have parent university held at least twice a year in every single school, instead of having to go down to Hart Street, but have them right in the school and have childcare for them, have them a little bit of food that always brings them. And I think that you're gonna find that will turn around and with what John Cloud is trying to do with education, will be educating these parents also to be involved in their schools. And as you can see, you can tell what parents are and what parents are not, but they're not having the opportunity. And again, they are afraid to go to school because some of them didn't even graduate themselves. And again, some of the comments. The other thing that I, I would really like to, to address is there's a survey in there that the Explorers did through the Boy Scouts of America, which I think every school ought to have a boy scout, girl scout, and cub scout opportunity. But in that, they interviewed this past year, it was released in August, 20,780 youth that was in the Monroe County area, asking them what it is they wanted to do in the future. I think this is a tool that you could work with, Explorers, and do it for every one of our students, right from pre-K, right through school, to find out what it is our youth want to do and be able to educate to that, where the teachers know what the dreams are, that if one of the children is having a problem and that, that he wants to be a policeman and he's causing trouble. A teacher be able to know that they wanna be a policeman and that if they get arrested and if they act the way they do, they won't be able to. And I think if we teach to that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Please conclude.
Yes. I think that if we teach to that and find out what these youth want, and also through the Rochester Business Alliance, find out what employers are gonna need for employees down the road. And the other thing is that the school that you've got, uh, down on Hart Street, it is really underutilized. And if you wanna have a print shop that's not even open, their printer's probably about 40 years old. Things can be done to keep youth involved in their education and their parents too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Jordan Brown followed by Dana Bratcher. Jordan Brown here? Jordan Brown. Dana Bratcher, is Dana here? Dana will be followed by Carrie Remus.
Dana Bratcher, vice president, student governor, Memorial Community College, Dayton City Campus. This statement, what's more important is that I'm a concerned citizen and a, and a member of ARM myself. This statement was prepared by Maya Brown in representation for our, our team, and it follows. Last week, a 20-year district employee, Ms. Kaiser, who teaches children of African descent, is alleged to have referred to them as monkeys and animals. You say you are investigating and that if these allegations are substantiated, it will not be tolerated or defended. ARM is happy to hear those words and will hold you to that commitment. When it is substantiated, and we believe it will be, ARM calls for the termination of employment for this 20-year district employee who somehow managed to spend 20 years in the district with these alleged views of children of African descent, affecting children of color for 20 years directly or indirectly with or on board views of them in an organizational culture that is apparently not set up to detect any warranted signs or provide any intervention. The fact that this could happen without having so much as an internal system of documentation via incident reporting software is baffling to us. This means that institutionally, incidences of racism can remain under the radar. We submit to you that it is not merely an individual villainous act by Ms. Kaiser, she's probably a very nice lady. Her actions reflect the symptom of a systemic, institutional, and structural race problem within the walls of a, of the district at large. A 20-year veteran must set some permission and protection within the institution to make such bold acclamations in a public classroom setting about a vulnerable population of students. To wield that kind of institutional power fearlessly and without regard points to some deeper systemic work that is begging to occur. I submit that attitudes like this with some variation are perhaps what continues to produce for children of color, low graduation rates, compelling stories of scarcity of resources available to them for adequate quality education throughout city schools, increased violence fed via increased experience of devaluation, cuts in enrichment, music and arts programs for self-expression and development, low value tolerance and attention given to parental voice and feedback on classroom educational culture, oh, excuse me, on, on classroom educational culture that poorly serves them, as well as critical issues affecting their children, poor student promotion, pardon me, this is new to me. Educational culture, low value tolerance and attention given to parental voice and feedback on classroom educational culture that poorly serves them, as well as critical issues affecting their children, poor student empowerment and achievement, lower standards and expectations, social promotion, this will be definitely brief, poor faculty and student performance, poor faculty and student performance in meeting standardized educational goals and a lack of creativity for the learning process with increased frustration of students and parents of color throughout the district. Voicing this type of bigotry may be rare, but harboring the thoughts deep in one's heart and mind are not rare at all. We come from a history of racial socializations that we are all at some time or other ashamed of and need to do some work on. The truth is, we need each other to create a racially just and socially conscious world. The only way to get at some of it is to begin some institutional structural work on dismantling racism while building parallel lines of accountability.
Thank.
A little shorter, just briefly.
Okay. Conclude, please.
Yes. This is a hard moment in our human life together, but if we do the right thing, we can navigate through it. Oddly enough, the destinies of people of color and white people are intertwined. This is our moment to stand together for social and racial justice, to move together toward transformation that's real and lasting. ARM, again, has caused for a racial analysis of how racism functions within the city school district with an intentional, intentional 20-year plan to dismantle it structurally. We again call for and support an African-American Affairs Department to address these issues of race and organizational culture for students and faculty of African descent. We call for a racial justice anti-racism training for every district employee. We call for removal of Ms. Kaiser, direct teachings, direct teaching setting of children while these allegations are being investigated, and of course, termination when those allegations have been substantiated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bratcher. We will now move on to Carrie Remus followed by Emma Fleming. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Bazzard, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carrie Remus and I'm with the Rochester Fund for Educational Accountability, a watchdog group pushing for educational justice for Rochester's children. I join the countless parents, citizens, and community organizations outraged by the allegations of misconduct by Wilson Academy teacher, Ms. Kaiser. If I've said this once, I've said this 100 times, this would never be tolerated in Fairport, Brighton, or Pittsburgh. But sadly, these last two years have been littered with too many cases of Rochester employees who have been accused, indicted, or convicted of misconduct. When our organization inquired about policies and procedures concerning employee misconduct, we were informed that these matters were considered largely matters of collective bargaining, negotiated individually. Indeed, each case of misconduct, a different response from the district, a different level of cooperation with authorities, and a different negotiated discipline outcome, leaving the community with the impression that union power, central office politics, or race decide these matters. If this district is serious about changing outcomes for Rochester's children, it must move from the rhetoric of accountability to the practice of it. It must be serious about changing its culture that consistently puts employee interest over the interests of the children. We must insist on well-documented practices and protocols to handle allegations of misconduct, abuse, or incompetence. These protocols must first and foremost protect the children, and they must be developed in open collaboration with the community. And we must also insist on reform of the transfer process that invisibly shifts troubled teachers to unsuspecting schools each spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Fleming followed by Lori Thomas.
Been in the system, and the way that these teachers come to school is unbelievable. Seem like we have heard everything and some of them dress like they are going to the farm, even though when I went to the farm, I had on decent clothes. Amen. They come in with shoes, look like they've been, I know they don't know nothing about picking beans, which I did, in a cotton field, which I did. But I'm trying to say to this, I'm giving up. I'm at this point, I'm afraid to go into school. I've been out on leave since February. The language in the school is ridiculous. We have 75% of our teachers, and I don't have to say what color, because it's not about color, but when will our kids get an education? I graduated from Savannah State with a BS degree in math and a minor in physics and computer science. To this day, I still can't read and understand what I'm reading. So I give up. Because one thing about math, at the time when I was out there, every child could add, divide, subtract, was the basic, and I did a good job at that. Now, what's wrong with our educated teachers that our kids still cannot read? I am so upset because I was at the U of R on Monday when Andrew Young stood up and made the statement, we still are not moving anywhere and he's the problem. So I decided that I'm gonna give up teaching and let you all hell that. I'm fixing to get on the bandwagon with Obama. I'm opening up my building. I'm just letting you know where I'm fixing to go now, to see some changes. Come on down. I'm fixing to get on the bus. Yes, sir. He has a headquarters at my place on Hudson, right down from Franklin. And to the new superintendent, I once was old, but now, I once was young, but now I'm old. I've never seen the righteous forsaken, and I will never beg for breath.
Thank you. Lori Thomas.
We don't start until you start talking.
You can hand it to the clerk and she'll get it to you.
A quick motion to extend the time, please, folks.
So moved.
Second, second by Commissioner White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, time's extended.
Good evening, board, Superintendent Bazzard, ladies and gentlemen. What I handed the members of the board and the superintendent was a survey that's given to sixth-grade students, and several of the questions that were answered were very disturbing to me. Describe something you have learned in school and tell me how this will help you in your life or in your other experiences. I learned that school is not important. When you get older, where would you like to live? I would like to live in a home with my girl. What do you need to be able to do this? Nothing. What do you think school can help you do to prepare for graduation? I'd like to give you a few moments to read the survey and then move on. This is a book called Clean Your Room, Harvey Moon. In this book, Mom has finally had enough and tells Harvey that it's time to clean his room. Well, Harvey wants to watch his favorite television show, and to Harvey, his room didn't seem messy at all. So he went about getting, he knew he had to clean his room. Mom was gonna let him watch TV. So he went about cleaning his room, getting rid of all the things that he could by stuffing them under the rug, in closets, in drawers. Harvey knew his room was clean, but Mom knew better. For years, superintendents have felt that the problems of our educational system really didn't seem messy at all, but when they began to clean, the task became so overwhelming that things were shoved under the rug. The district looked clean to them, but the community, like Mom, knew better. We knew that there were drawers filled with innumerable pieces of scrap paper assessments, resources were piled into dark closets, and ineffective and inefficient staff members were swept under the rug. Mom knew, like we now know, that even though the rug covered up a multitude of indiscretion, a huge mess still existed. At the superintendent's monthly meeting, sir, you commented that the solutions list that was created by the, by the community was not as comprehensive as it should be. We know that. But we also know that the problems are so extensive that they must be tackled one lump at a time. We know, like Mom, that we must work together. And Superintendent Bazzard, like Mom, we know that it's time to clean our district. Luke chapter 5, verse 37 states, "No one pours new wine into old wine skins. If he does, the new wine will burst the skins, the wine will run out, and the wine skins will be ruined." Members of the board, Superintendent Bazzard, our time- Members of the Board, Superintendent Bazzard, our time has run out, and we will no longer tolerate our children being ruined. It's time to clean out, not cover up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Just let me say that this Board and this Superintendent will investigate the allegations that were made at Wilson, and we are, we were made aware of the issue at Franklin Montessori. I know that the Superintendent will be working hard and giving a report to the Board as soon as possible on the issue with Franklin Montessori. Thank you all for coming out again tonight. Our next meeting will be the annual Black History Month celebration on February 24th at 5:30, followed by the Board Business Meeting at 6:30. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.[648.86]